Bad.
Okay.
I, I hope to improve this week. So when I, when I die, I want to go peacefully in my sleep. Not screaming in terror like my grandfather was peacefully in his, I'm sorry, I already screwed it up. When I die, I want to go peacefully in my sleep like my grandfather, not screaming in terror like his passengers.
John sent a bunch of jokes out earlier in the weekend. I forgot to print them up, but they, they were pretty good. So John, four of those over to Nick. All right, any happy or sad dollars? Whoa, someone got another joke?
Yeah, I've got one.
All right.
This was sent to me. And if I'm ever murdered, just know I ran my mouth to the bitter end.
Somehow that doesn't seem hard for you, Bill.
I know. It's appropriate.
Okay, any happy or sad dollars?
I'm a sad dollar. I think I saw that Dr. Conkle's mom died.
Oh no.
Yeah, it was posted.
Well, our prayers.
That's probably why he's not here today.
Yep. Well, our prayers certainly go out to, uh, the Dr. Conkle and his family. Well, I'll give a happy dollar out. Uh, thanks for joining us, Michael. Uh, let your club know that anybody is welcome to our meetings anytime.
Thank you. I'll let, I'll let them know.
Anybody else have any happy dollars?
I have one quick one. I have, there's a fantastic establishment in town. It's called Latif John's. They have great subs. They're on Rod 82. So they get them delivered in time. They're very delicious and I appreciate them getting here before the meeting.
They are freaky fresh.
I wish we all had one of those, Nick.
Sorry, I was hungry and I had to order.
We used to level fines for self-promoting or promoting another, uh, member's business. So we're going to pass, but you've had a fair warning.
I owe you $2 now.
Okay.
All right. Uh, with that's all being said, uh, I'd like to introduce our speaker for today. Our speaker today is our fellow Rotarian, Tony Dunlop. Uh, Tony's gonna teach us some fundamentals of chess and also tell us a little bit about himself and his family. Uh, please join me in welcoming our fellow Rotarian, Tony Dunlop.
Well, thank you very much. Glad to be here and I'm glad to have the opportunity to share a passion with you. I have a passion for chess. Now, when I say chess is, it's more than just a board game. It's more than just a game that you may have played when you were younger. Um, when I say chess, I want to preface it with saying scholastic chess. Scholastic chess involves competition, involves tournament play. And there's an organization that governs scholastic chess. It's called the United States Chess Federation. For the last 20 years, I have been teaching chess in Northeast Ohio. I've been to churches, boys and girls clubs, rec centers, and I've been to a lot of schools. And I've been trying to spread the game that I love. I actually learned how to play this game when I was 12 years old and I want to say that was probably 1971. In 1971, I went to the local boys and girl, well, it was a boys' club then, saw two gentlemen playing the game and never seen it before. I sat there, watched them play, and when it was over, one of them showed me how to, how to move the pieces, told me the names of the pieces. And then I had to go out and actually really learn. I was in the seventh grade. There's a, a young man in my class. His name was James Presti Giacomo. He knew how to play. So James and I played chess probably every day. James beat me every time we played and we played for two years. James beat me for two years. Okay? Ja- um, James would be laughing at me. Now, I was determined that I was going to beat James and I was determined I was gonna learn this game. So I went to the library, got a couple of books. But there was a chess program on television. It came on at some ungodly hour at 4:00 AM or 4:30 in the morning. It was either Thursday or Wednesday morning and I would get up and I would watch, it was a 30-minute program and I would watch their program. When I made it to the ninth grade, I played James and I beat James. James never beat me again. Now, the moral to that story, when I share it to my students is, one was persistence. I didn't give up. And the other, a lot of times people give up before things can actually turn around. Now, in chess, only way to get better, gotta be in competition. You want to play someone stronger, better than you. While I was playing James and James was beating and laughing at me, I was learning. James wasn't learning. James was playing a weaker opponent. I then took my skills and joined a chess team and then I played for, for four years on the chess team in competition. So what I've done today, um, I shared my love with students in Louisville, Kentucky, Cincinnati, Ohio, and Solon, Ohio, and Cleveland. Now, in Solon, up until last year, I taught chess in the Solon schools before I came to work. Now, I worked for the Girl Scouts. I happened to be the IT manager and my boss is John Graves. I actually became a part of the Rotarian. When John became president, he asked me to join and I joined. And it's an organization that I'm happy that I am a member of. Now, in spreading this love of the game of chess, before I come to work in the morning, I would go to one of the Solon schools. The elementary schools, we start at 7:00 AM, from 7:00 AM to 7:45. The middle schools, we start at 7:30 to 8:15 and then I'll come to work. Now, I do the high school on Wednesday afternoons. Up until last year, between the six schools, I had 240 students playing chess. Now, in the last 10 years, the Solon School District has dominated scholastic chess in the state of Ohio. The high school team won six state championships out of eight. And one time we had opportunity to win seven in a row. Now, we decided not to go to that tournament because we went to a national tournament the week before and the parents had decided they were only going to make one trip. Kids wanted to go to Nashville. We went to Nashville. So we missed the state championship in Cincinnati. Now, had we went to that tournament, we would have won it. And that's just not really bragging. It's actual fact. Because Solon School District is probably the only school district that has that many kids actually playing scholastic chess. Now, I'm gonna show a couple of videos for you. I'm gonna start off with one which is my favorite. And I'm gonna walk you through it a little bit. It's called Searching for Bobby Fischer. So I want to share my screen. Let's see here. Find my video. This is actually the, is one of my favorite chess movies. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it and probably talk, uh, during this little clip a little bit. Can you all see the video? Right?
Yes.
This is actually a true story. It's a young man that's getting ready to face his nieces. Someone that he has been avoiding from playing.
It's unsettling, isn't it? When you realize there are only so many things you can teach a child. But finally, they are who they are.
Now, those are the two chess coaches. Now Josh is the young man that the movie is about. The Ben Kingsley character happens to be one of his coaches. And he has another, cause he actually has two coaches. The other coaches show up in a minute. Now, the Lawrence Fishburne character is the other coach. And he happens to be a coach that plays in one of the parks in, in New York. So his play and the way he plays and the way he teaches is different than the Ben Kingsley character. Now, when he says he's trying to psych Josh out, in schol- scholastic chess is big business. Now, when I play chess, and you may not know what a chess clock is, but I'll show you later what a chess clock is. Um, you also have to record your moves. It's called chess notation. You have to write down your move. So when I, when I was playing, if I noticed that my opponent was watching me write down my move, I will always go down the list to like move 16, put a big circle or star by it before we get there. Because I know he's sitting there wondering, what's gonna happen when we get to move 16? Well, probably nothing's gonna happen in 16. I just saw he was watching and I wanted to psych him out. And so chess is all a mind game.
Don't do it, Josh. Don't even think about it.
Bring her out.
Keep her back.
Bring her out, Josh.
Is it over?
Is it over? He's setting them up. Josh is setting them up. I told you.
Now, there's another difference between the two coaches. Okay? Now, the queen is the most powerful piece on the chessboard. And everybody loves to have power and everyone wants their queen. But you can win a chess game without your queen. And that's one of the things I try to teach my students. And when I play them, I always try to capture their queen first and they try to protect her. But they can win without a queen. Now, I'm gonna fast forward to, to probably, um, one of the best moments of this chess match. Now, there's, the way the pieces are on the board, they say, they say that a chess master, they say that a chess master can see so many moves in a head. And in that particular game, the Ben Kingsley character saw that, that Josh can win the game in 12 moves. And the scene that you just saw where he knocked the pieces off the table, that was during one of his trainings. He was trying to teach him. So he cleared the board, knocked it away, the pieces away. Josh was upset, but he learned from that, from that lesson. And he's watching it right now. The moves are there and he's putting it together. 12 moves ahead. And when he sees it, he's gonna offer his opponent a draw. A draw's a tie. He said, I would share the championship with you.
Come on, move.
The young man doesn't see it.
What that's supposed to mean?
What's that supposed to mean?
He's offering him a draw.
I'm offering you a draw. Draw. You forgot the beginning. It's lost. You just don't know it.
He tells him, you've lost. You just don't know you lost.
I have. Take the draw. I'll share the championship. Take the draw. Move.
All right. So what happened in, in that sequence? The players were, were in what's called the end game. And Josh's opponent saw that he was gonna get a chance to get his queen before Josh was able to get a queen. But what his opponent did not realize, once Josh got his queen second, his move put his opponent in check. And the opponent had to move out of check and once he moved out of check, he lost his queen. So what's left on the board, Josh has a king and a queen against the king. And the odds are Josh was probably going to win the game, so therefore his opponent resigned. Now, that is something, vision, forecasting, looking ahead at time and putting all your moves together, that always amazed me how a young person can do that. So in my 20, 20 years of teaching chess in Solon, I have 51 state champions, this team and individuals. Started my first chess program on, in April of 2000. It was six young people that I had. When November came, it was the Ohio Grade Level State Championship. It was in Columbus. And I said, well, why don't we go to Columbus just to play in a chess tournament? And we went just for fun. I didn't realize that one of my fifth graders would turn out to be the fifth grade state of Ohio champion. He was a co-champion. So what happened when all the kids saw his name in the paper, the other fifth graders in Solon joined the team. The next year, we go back to Columbus. He was a sixth grade co-champion. Now, he never won another championship individually, but the teams got better, the teams got larger. So scholastic chess. Welcome to my world. Scholastic chess, United States Chess Federation. There is currently 93,000 members. Probably 71, 72,000 are young people. I started playing chess in 1973 tournament chess and chess has grown. What was going on around that time? The Ohio champion, not the Ohio champion, but the United States champion was Bobby Fischer. Bobby Fischer won the United States Chess Championships when he was 14 years old, I think in 1958. But in 1974, he played for the world championship against a Russian, a Russian called Boris Spassky. Now, when they played chess for the world championship, they played 24 games. And a game can last a long time. Now, you may have noticed the chess clock. And with a chess clock, games are timed. Adult games, you have two hours to make 40 moves. Now, that's two hours apiece. So the game could be four hours long. Scholastic, the kids have 30, 30 minutes. Game 30 means each player has 30 minutes. Game is going to be over in an hour, whether you checkmate someone or not. The first person that runs out of time loses the game. Cause when you have a tournament, you have to have closure. These are the top, these are the ratings in chess. In chess, when you play a scholastic chess tournament, you get a rating, you get a number. The higher the rating, the stronger the player you are. Grandmasters are 2,600 and above. I think I carry champion, he's around 2,800. My rating is 1568. I'm a Class C player. Which means I'm an average chess player. These are the top chess players in the world. Magnus Carlsen is the number one player in the world. So we have what? We have about four, four Americans on that list. Now, I'm gonna skip down to where we are in Ohio with the youth. Out of the girls in the state of Ohio, Alicia Harper is one of my students. She started with me when she was in, in the first grade. And she's the fifth ranked girl in the state of Ohio. She was my first female state champion. In the fourth grade, she was the grade level champion when she was in the fourth grade. And Arya, Arya started playing chess with me in Solon, but when she got to middle school, um, she changed schools. She goes to Hathaway Brown. But two of the top six were basically my players. I still consider Arya to be my, my student. These are the top 50 students in the state of Ohio. Like as you can see, out of the top 50, four of them are currently Solon students. Now, the two in red, they live in Solon. They started with me when they were in elementary school. But when they got to junior, went to middle school, they went to university school. So as you can see, out of the top 50, basically six of them started with me in chess. And that's one of the reasons why the Solon School District is so powerful. Now, I'm gonna go back a little bit. We talked about playing chess. Now, the chessboard, and some of you that may not know, every square on the chessboard has, has a name. So if I point right here, this will be B4. This will be C6. It uses coordinates. You need that in order for chess notation. Cause you have to record your moves in chess. Once you record your moves in chess, you have a documentation of what happened to the game. You can take that documentation later to practice. You can show your friends, your parents, the brilliant move you made. Or you can, or you can go over mistakes that you may have made in the game. So it's important that the kids know chess notation. Now, it's important also to know that in chess, white moves first. So the white square should always be in the lower right-hand corner. If the black square is at chess notation, it's not gonna work out right. And the first thing that, when I meet young people, they ask them, do you know how to play chess? They say, yeah. But then if they don't know chess notation, I figured they don't know chess and they put, set the board up wrong. Okay? Now, the chess clock. Now, this is what my clock looked like. This is what the clocks look like when I play chess. Currently, they have digital clocks. And as you can see, before the, at the three-minute mark is a red flag. And when a mini hand gets to that flag, flag starts to move up. Now, if your flag falls first, you lose. Game's over. And in the clip, you saw the players hitting the chess clock after they made a move. Now, you're supposed to take the hand that you moved the piece with, the same hand that you have to hit your chess clock with. All right. As a member of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, and I have been a member of that organization for, for 40 years, we sponsor tournaments in October where we're giving out these gifts as door prizes, electronic gifts along with the trophies, and these are some of our sponsors. And so I don't want to bore you too much longer. I'm gonna go to my last, my last video that explains exactly what I've been doing for this last few years.
Thank you for tuning into the Inside Sports Report right here on TV20. I'm your host, Christian Patterson. The Brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Delta Alpha Lambda Chapter, welcomes students, family, and friends to the fifth annual Cleveland Scholastic Chess Open. The day was full of fun, laughter, fellowship, and of course chess, while assisting their efforts to raise scholarship funds for the youth as they pursue their academic endeavors. Here's more from the fifth annual Cleveland Scholastic Chess Open.
This is our fifth year and today I think we have 173 kids registered playing in this tournament. And that's the largest. Uh, we started, I think the first year we might have 118. It's grown every year. My goal is to see any scholastic tournament in Northeast Ohio, not just this one, but all of them, where there's at least 300 kids playing chess.
Parents realize that getting their children involved in different types of activities will only help them in life.
Well, I never, I really didn't play much chess growing up. But I thought, hey, if this is something else besides, um, soccer or art or music, it's another avenue for them to get, to broaden their horizons and learn. I thought it was great opportunities.
This tournament's wonderful. Tony Dunlap does an awesome job, you know, inspiring these kids. He has so many different ways that just to get them here is, is just wonderful. To have scholarships for the, the seniors and those high school kids, it's so, it's, you know, it's inspirational for them. Um, it shows that there are people that value what they do too. And I think that's important to know that, um, somebody else looks up to them. It, it's just great. Tony does an awesome job.
Connor Kuchel, a student at Hawkins High School, has been participating in the Cleveland Scholastic Chess Open for the past five years. And this year, he was awarded for his outstanding merits in academics, scholastic chess, and being a positive role model. He really loves to give back by mentoring young players on the game of chess.
You know, when you're teaching someone, it's almost as if like that person becomes a part of you. So that success, their successes or their failures become kind of your successes and failures. Cause you know, it feels really good to teach someone and then if they play in a tournament, to watch them win. And it's sort of like reliving the successes yourself. And a lot of times the, the kids or the families will feel grateful for, um, what chess has brought to them and all the things that they learned from it.
Throughout the tournament's history, over 400 students have participated. The tournament is making a difference by engaging students in chess, a sport that fosters numerous skills.
So for the tournament, I have 22 students from here. And, um, we are participating in every section that we have opened up today. The novice to the rated section. And, uh, most of my children are from Brunswick, Broadview Heights, um, Solon. And I have a lot of kids from Akron who goes to the Revia, Discovery Montessori School, um, Old Trail, um, and, um, Copley Middle School and, um, the Lippman School. So yeah, we have, I have about seven, seven to eight different school students participating over here from our chess club.
What chess actually does is, the way I see it, um, it uses both sides of your brain, the right and the logical and the critical, um, thinking. So it needs both side used simultaneously because you're doing two things at the same time. You're defending and attacking. So therefore, you know, how chess helps is it teaches a child to problem solve. It teaches children how to time manage. It teaches children about logical thinking. So it helps out in so many different areas. And those important aspects actually make, uh, makes a very good lifelong advantage for any children who plays chess.
Because of the investment in the Cleveland Scholastic Chess Program, youth will have the opportunity to further their education and have access to opportunities that will enrich their lives and make the world a better place.
To my knowledge, we're the only tournament where the high school winner can pick between four available scholarships. And we're trying to grow that list. And those colleges right now is University of Maryland, Baltimore County, University of Akron, uh, Alabama A&amp;M, and the Hampton Alumni Group has a thousand dollars if, if the student wishes to go to one of those schools. And then we have a college division where we give a job internship and it started with G. And it started with GE Corporation, and this year we added First Energy. So right now, the high school winner, I mean, the college division winner can pick between two job internships, GE Corporation and First Energy. And that's something no one did until we did with GE three years ago. And I hope to grow both of those lists. My fraternity, we pride ourselves on being first. But one of the things that we try to do is to give back to the community and help the youth within, within our community. We have mentorship programs. We actually have three, with the Scholastic Chess, providing kids the opportunity to increase the skills that they need to be successful in school. To play chess and be successful at chess, it takes concentration, analytical skills, and patience, and a whole lot of other skills to be successful in chess. Those are also the same skills you need to be successful in school, and fraternity realizes that. And so, like, like, we can get the kid, we keep him off the street, try to keep him in school, tell him to stay in school, and along with this tournament, also to provide a job. That's a full circle. Go to school, stay in school, go to college, and now try to help, help get a job. I think that's, that is a powerful tool. Now hopefully, others will try to do exactly what we're doing, and we'll have more kids playing chess, more kids having scholarship and job opportunities.
Alright folks, that's it. That's, that's what I do. Any questions?
Well, let me tell you, Tony, I am really impressed. And thank you for all the efforts you do for our youth in the community. I mean, it's definitely, definitely helps our, and I didn't know it was so big. I, I, you know, I knew that you, you taught chess, but I had no idea on the scale that, that you do this for. So thank you for your efforts, and I'm impressed at how.
It's a labor of love. What do you do with your spare time, Tony? It's a labor of love.
It is really neat, you know, and watching these kids, and I had no idea how many kids were interested in chess around the area. Just phenomenal, really, really cool. Anybody have some questions for Tony?
Yeah, Tony, I have one. First, thank you so much. It was great to learn more about you. The one question that I had was particularly a chess question. Isn't it an unwritten rule, or is there something to be said about taking over someone's queen too quickly?
Well, one of the rules is to not bring your queen out there early.
Okay.
There, the four fundamentals of chess is to fight and control the center. Develop your pieces, develop your pieces, means to move your knights and bishops out. You want a castle, and then pawn structure. You want to keep your queen at home as long as possible, because she's the most valuable piece. And once you bring her out on the board early, they start to chase her.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Tony, I have one question. I see that you indicated that one of the players there was 12 plays ahead. How, how many plays ahead do you have?
Probably three or four. I can't do it. Because there, there are so many different possible moves a person can make. First of all, I tell students to go ahead and get a book on openings. An opening is, is the first eight or nine moves of a game. And because of the history of chess, a lot of the grandmasters have particular openings that they use, and they all have names. So when players see that, they understand it. Okay, now. Then you have the middle game. But there's so many different variations that it can go into many different directions, okay? So I could probably do pretty good, maybe three or four.
Be interesting to play you, because I have no idea what I'm doing in place.
Well, me either.
I have a question. Tony, do you still compete?
No. The last time I competed was in 1995, was in the New York Open. So, so as an adult, I have won, I won a few hundred dollars playing like, the adult tournament, there's money involved for the adult tournaments. I went out to, to Los Angeles in 1993, and I won my section. So I came home with $1,500 for winning that section. And, and the World Open, the World Open happens around the Fourth of July every year. Used to always be in Philadelphia. A couple of years, like, they moved it to a couple of different cities. It's $200,000 are, are on the line for the different sections. I showed you earlier that I'm a Class C player. So the tournaments I play in, I only play in my class, my strength level. I don't try to play the grandmasters. I stay in my lane. I know what my strengths are. So I play in tournaments where I have a chance to win money. And so when I played in the World Opening the first time, you played nine rounds, okay? In the ninth, ninth round, I have six points. If I get seven, I'm probably coming home with $3,000, okay? And everybody at my table, we're all basically in the same category. Well, I lost, and I had to share the $3,000 with seven other people.
So you got dinner?
Yes, I did.
Tony, I have a question. Thank you from a teacher's standpoint. I was just wondering how you gear your teaching to a first grader versus a 12th grader?
Well, that's an excellent question. I made the mistake, especially like if I had a mixed class, I made the mistake of trying to dummy it down to the first grade's level. But that's wrong, okay? First graders gotta catch up. Okay? I don't, I don't dummy down anymore. Unfortunately, I've had a couple of kindergartners that were state champions in kindergarten in the first grade. And, but how they can understand the nuances of putting everything together blows my mind. You know, the pieces have to work together like in order to, to move. So one of the things I do do with the young kids that they love is we play blindfold chess. I put blindfolds on them, and they have to make the moves. By using chess notation, they have to tell me the moves that they're going to make. Now, I start them off by allowing them to make the move for white and the move for black. They're controlling both sides. And I tell them, you can see the board, you know how to set the chess setup, right? So you know where all the pieces are, and you're moving them. So you, you need to remember what squared that they're on. Now, some kids, some kids might get one or two moves. But I had a, I had a fourth grader that made 23 moves before he made a mistake. I don't even think that I could have did that, you know?
Wow, well, thank you so much. Have you ever had anybody with special needs that has tried to play chess as a student of yours?
Yes. Matter of fact, that, that the father shared a letter of his son. His, his daughter happens to be Alicia Harper, the young lady that was my first female champion. Her older brother has some challenges. But the father wrote a great letter on how it helped his son focus, okay? And so, yes, we, we have had a couple, yeah.
That's wonderful. I love to hear those stories. Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. Now, my question is though, with all the benefits of chess, of the, the analytical piece, on why a whole lot of other schools don't have a chess club? And if they do have a chess club, why aren't they participating in Scholastic Chess? Because when I talk about chess, I'm talking about Scholastic Chess. Because that's, that's in the competition, because that's where the, the skill set is strengthening, is when you play in competition. So what's going on in Nerdonia? How come Nerdonia don't have any chess clubs and, and things?
Because you haven't started it yet.
Well, that might be the case. I tried to get one going to the why, but, but they hadn't responded yet.
Oh, we're gonna have to bring it up to Joe Clark and Casey, aren't we?
Yep.
You, you might have mentioned this in your presentation, Tony, but uh, can you just expound on the correlation between chess players and their academic success?
Yes, now, kids used to say, well, you gotta, in order to play chess, you gotta be smart. And I tell the kids, you're, you're smart. Like, why are you short, short, short selling yourself or your skill set? There, there is normally a correlation that the chances are a kid that can win a chess tournament is probably a kid with a 4.0 or better grade point average. But, so there is a, a correlation. But on the other hand, like a lot of kids, some, some kids that have the high GPA still can't catch on to the nuances of playing chess. Okay, but, but a lot of chess champions are probably good students. But a lot of good students aren't good chess players. You know, so my very first chess team, all of those students went to colleges like Cornell, Carnegie Mellon. For instance, Dean, Dima Shernick, which was my very first champion, but he went to Carnegie Mellon. He graduated, and he went to work for Microsoft. And one of the things that I've learned, I, I met John Gray's brother. And John Gray's brother works for Microsoft. And I had mentioned Dima's name, and while I was standing there, he checked the registry in Seattle, saw Dima's name, sent him a text, said, hey, I'm standing here with Mr. Dunlap. Mr. Dunlap said hi and stuff, and he told me that, that when he got back to Microsoft, that he was gonna reach out to Dima to become his mentor. Now, I'm not sure like, you know, if, if they ever met or, or anything. But, but that's the power of, of one, relationships, and the power of, of, of chess. I brought some young men to Cleveland from New York. It was three young men a few years ago that became chess masters at the age of 12. They were African-American. They lived in New York, different portion of New York. They didn't know each other. And they all took the turn of having a title, been the youngest African-American chess master. I brought two of them to New York, and they shared their story with students, took them to a couple of schools in Cleveland. And they were 16 at the time. But in chess, they had the opportunity to be members of the United States Chess Federation chess teams. So they had been to Europe several times representing the United States chess teams. So it's a huge world, it's a very competitive world. There's a lot of scholarships available that a lot of people just aren't aware of. But the people that are in Scholastic Chess, they, they understand what's going on.
Any more questions for Tony? Well, thank you again, Tony. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for sharing.
Tell us about chess, because boy, I had no idea how big it was in the Solon area and, and the effort that you put into it. So thank you very much, and it, it does make me want to start playing chess. And I haven't played since high school, so thanks again. Just a couple announcements. We still need holiday gift cards. The deadline was today, but we'll stretch it on to Friday. So please give me your discount, or donate your gift cards. You can drop them off here at Specialty Lubricants. We've mailed out the address, but it's 8300 Corporate Park Drive in Macedonia. If you could drop your gift cards off here to the front desk, it'd be appreciated. Or you have the option of dropping it off at, at my house. Again, the addresses have been sent out to you, so we'll extend that to, to this Friday. The dictionaries for the third graders are in. We have 1,100 dictionaries that we ordered. I'm having some labels made, so I'll be asking for some volunteers to pick up a box and label 1,100 dictionaries. Basically, what we do is we put labels donated by the Rotary Club in Nerdonia Hills in the front cover of the dictionary. And then we will set up a time and day where we can give them to both St. Bartabas and Nerdonia Elementary Schools. I have not found out exactly how we're gonna do that, whether we can have a member of Nerdonia Rotary be present, or we have to depend on the teachers to do that for us. It depends on what they have in place for this COVID restrictions, but we'll make sure the kids get those. So I'll keep you posted. Most likely, we'll be doing that after the Thanksgiving holiday. Ahead on the agenda that we need volunteers to unload trucks at the Emergency Assistance Center for Thursday. However, looks like Joyce Hunt has plenty of people to do that. They have a, a bunch of junior high kids, like a dozen of them that have volunteered to unload the trucks. So we no longer need volunteers to do that. Next week, we do not have a meeting, because it's a Thanksgiving holiday week. So everybody enjoy their holiday. The next meeting will be December 1st. Our speaker will be our fellow Rotarian, Joe Clark. He's going to be discussing his new book. So please join us for that. This Friday, we have a board meeting at noon. Everyone's welcome to join. Debbie will be sending out the invitation for that. And please remember our reverse raffle coming up on February 6th. We'll keep you posted on how that's going. Our club has also decided, the YMCA has their annual Turkey Trot. Our club's going to be also sponsoring that. So we'll be getting a Rotary name on some of the flyers and, and some of the media for that too, to help publicize our Rotary Club. I believe that is everything. If, does anybody else have anything they would like to add? Okay, one more thing. We are also going to be doing the ringing the bell for the Salvation Army. That will be coming up within the next few weeks. You'll be getting notification of anybody that would like to volunteer to do that. Other than that, I think that's it. With that being said, if Rotarians could join me in the four-way test, Debbie, if you could pull that up, please? Please join me in our four-way test of the things we think, say, or do. First, is it the truth?
The truth.
Second, is it fair to walk with third? Third, will.
Third, will build goodwill and better friendships. Fourth, will be beneficial.
Thanks again to our visitors. Thanks for joining us, Mike.
Well, thank you. Love the opportunity. Thank you, Tony. It was very interesting.
I hope you are ready to go and play chess.
I've never done it. I may give it a try.
All right, great. Thanks, everybody, and then enjoy your Thanksgiving, and we'll see everyone later. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.